Showing six o'clock. Before we start the meeting, I'm gonna leave this in the pledge and I'll ask Commissioner Zeta to say a prayer for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly fathers, we gather here tonight, continue to run your blessings down on our wonderful city. Bless all who are gathered here tonight to listen to the business of our city. Bless our wonderful staff and bless the troops that protect our freedoms every day through Christ our Lord. Amen.
That'll call this regular meeting. We'll take just any permission to work.
Jim? This is our first item we have tonight is in reference to your minutes. We have two sets of minutes for consideration approval tonight for your regular meeting on 4-3-2018 and for your special meeting on 4-10-2018.
Does anyone have a chance to review? I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero.
Well, the next item we have is in reference to the PSJRA that we have in MLK tonight.
I don't have one out of absence, the last lady unless somebody here. These things we need to report or something.
There's no changes to the workshop. We discussed some things, but nothing finalized, so.
Okay.
All right, moving on.
PDRB recommendation. Yes, the planning board did meet last Tuesday. They did consider your request to give recommendations for the accessory builds. They did come back with one recommendation. It is on page six for you to look at, and that's in reference to the overall height of accessory builds. They would recommend that you have a maximum height of 18 feet to the actual peak itself. They also did have a lengthy discussion about some of the other requirements on there. They wouldn't, at that point, they were not ready to give you another recommendation, but they did give you one on there.
All right, what's the word board on this? I mean, this is, this is a step in that direction.
It is a step. I think we need to continue to workshop it, maybe come up with something concrete that we put down if we so desire to make changes. It's a good starting point.
So what's the word of the board? We just wanna table it and look forward to future workshop?
I'd recommend table it.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. If we want to discuss it, we've talked about a workshop for the sewer system, we might want to combine those two.
Sure. All right, so for now, we'll go ahead and table that.
On the old business, the first item we have is the MLK landscaping. Commissioner Langston does have a proposal for you to look at tonight.
Yeah, GCPS probably serves as something of a proposal. Nationally is 25 gallon Valencia orange trees, three gallon double knot knockout roses, three gallon Mulley iron brass, straw rolls, peat moss bales, stakes, bracing labor. And what they're gonna do, they're gonna go down MLK and we're gonna try to put some landscape, well, we're gonna put some landscaping, not try, but we're gonna put some landscaping down. And Commissioner Quinn is gonna help with benches that we wanna put down and we probably get some garbage cans to go alongside of the road. The cost is $4137. I'm gonna ask the board to give us about $5,000. What can you think we'll get it from? BP funds?
That's always the question, Commissioner.
So there's not much to write, I just wanna take it out of, is there anywhere in the budget, Mike, that we can, that we can get $5,000 without hitting BP?
It is an unbudgeted item, but I'm sorry, Commissioner, I hadn't looked at it. Let me take a look.
Commissioner, I'm fine with moving forward with it if we can find. I think it'll be a good enhancement.
Absolutely.
Is this in line with what the PAC kinda had in mind for the grand vision?
No, no, it's totally different. The PAC is gonna come behind us and they have another vision, but this right here just gonna be temporary until they have to do another application, application. And they're gonna come back. It's a lot of other things that they have in mind that they wanna do.
What say you?
I think we can, we can put together the money, the money together out of the streets and highways and the recreation budgets to cover that without using the BP funds.
I'd love to see that. We keep nitpicking that BP fund and we need to jump it for a million.
We're starting to see some, some business activity down there. I think this is gonna help.
Absolutely.
I think if staff gets together, we can, we can put together the, the room and the budget.
I'll make a motion. We approve their request.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
You said the county's pitching in something?
I talked with Commissioner Quinn and whatever we need, anything that extra that we need, we'll pitch in.
I'm all for it.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Got a discussion item, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on Ms. Matthews. Can you come on up, please?
Certainly.
Do we have a sign-in chief today?
Yes, we do.
Nobody knows who you are.
I guess not. Good afternoon, everyone.
Afternoon.
My name is Lethal Matthews. And the question that I have now, the rose bushes under trees and everything, they're gonna be, how are you going to plant these strategic locations you have in mind?
Yeah, Mayor Patrick and Mr. John Grantland already wrote down MLK and there's certain spots that you can put them, like can't put some, a certain height on the right of ways. So we wrote down in this cost where we could put them.
Okay. And this is down, just down Martin Luther King way?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right.
Any further discussion from the audience? All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's pass this four zero.
All right, the next item we have is the road bond money. We've been working through this initially through Long Avenue's proposal to utilize the road bond money. I did talk with Mr. Hammond today. All indications are that we need to have contacts on the proposed work to be done by the end of June on that. What we have for you tonight is an idea to be able to expend that money. It's a turn to the handout for the label road bond money. We've kinda indicated things and steps of what need to do to try to meet that deadline of June the 30th.
Jim, can you kinda explain this out a little bit, step by step? What, what is the plan?
Yes, sir. First thing is the amount of money. To my understanding, it was $5 million initially. By the inter-local agreement, 22% would equate to $1.1 million, okay? We have to spend a little bit of the money for Mr. Smallwood to do some engineering work on the water line, so you have to spend a little bit of that money to the tune of less than $10,000. Next thing is, like we said, is we, all indications are that we have to have contracts by the end of June. With that in mind, time is the best. If you don't have a whole bunch of time to get things done. So proposal that we've laid out would be the first thing to do is, we've talked about replacing the water lines. We need permission from the board to bid out the water lines and bring those back with quotes on there for you to do that. Plan would be to utilize the SRF funds because it is a 60-40 grant alone. By doing that, what you will be doing is you will be getting $300,000 in the grant. $300,000 will be coming in the form of a loan. Indications are that we could submit for invoicing to the county for reimbursement of that amount of money to pay off that. So that way you do not have to borrow any money. So that would be $200,000 there. Step number two consideration is the First Street lift station. That would be, that is actually directly on Long Avenue there where you're actually, your sewer actually dumps into from Long Avenue. It does need to be replaced, but we believe we can rehab this. We would need to be engineered. It's not a lot of time to be able to put that in place, but that would be another one we consider for, to engineer and to go out to be able to see about it on there. We may or may not be able to get reimbursement for that one. We're still in discussion on that one. I think Commissioner Lowery has a little bit of information on that, but we are working through that, but we're not 100% sure on that item.
Yeah, from what I've seen, it's a questionable expense due to the fact that it's actually on our, on our own city property. It's not in the right of way and the money needs to be expended in the right of way. So that's, that's a questionable expense. So we just, we need to keep that in mind when we're bidding all this out. We may wanna bid something else instead of or with that.
The idea is to bid this stuff out, let's bring it all back to the table. Once we get these bids in, we know exactly how much money we're talking about for these items, and then we can make sure they're all gonna be approved. And at that point, then you can award those bids out there would be the recommendation. Number three.
Excuse me, Jim.
Yes, sir.
This rehab, once we rehab this lift station, how, how, how long will it last? Will we have any kinda guarantees that it will last a certain amount of years or?
It's a good question, I have to defer to public works or engineer on that. We think it would depend on the type of equipment, the warranties you give, but I would, I would defer to these guys.
You know, the, something like the polons at the station will wear out over time. The pumps over time will have to be rehabbed, but that's typical. But your station itself and having to go in there to a major project like this again, I mean, it's 20 plus years. You know, you've got some of those stations that are 50 plus, you know, this is one of them, but so easily 20 plus, you know, outside of normal maintenance. If you, your best guess, what's the lifespan on this current setup?
We've probably been living on borrowed time for six years, eight years, about something like that. So it could go another six, it could end tomorrow. It's been, it's living on. And it's, it's a, it's not at the end of the system, it's important. Everything in the city comes through it or through a line that it touches, so it's, it's pretty important.
No doubt, that's, it's much needed. I know I've talked about it a lot of times.
The third one would be to bid water line materials and boards for downtown. If you remember, we got money from Department of Economic Opportunity for Mr. Smallwood to do the engineering work on it. So that is, that is shelf ready there. So that would be an item there that we would ask for money from SRF on there, 60-40 again, and then be able to utilize the road bond money so you wouldn't have any debt on there. Also to look forward, the next item would be Reed Avenue. We've talked about Reed Avenue. What if you were, and that's been talked through the PSJRA. I'm not sure what the financials are on the PSJRA. That would be a question for Mr. Bill Kennedy. But what if you were to pay that and loan the PSJRA the money for that with a loan agreement you could get it back in a year or so, then you could use that money at your discretion for another project or whatever you decide to do. So that would be an idea there. And then from there, to understand it is with the actual paving itself, there's already a contract, my understanding, so it would be a change order. So we've worked through change order, you know, different, I would go ahead and throw at it, different roads that you're considering and that we can bring them all to the table and then you can lay these things out and you can look at the prices for the paving, for the water line materials, the bores, any other items in sewer. And that we can lay it all out there, make sure we all are agreement that it can be done with the money and that we can afford to do it within the funding that we have.
Clay, I know I spoke to you today on Eighth Street. I mean, it is a terrible shade and I know it costs a, a lot to probably fix that, or that, just that small portion of that road. And it's a much needed fix. What's, I guess, explain what the estimate is on that?
It is, it's one of the ones we've kinda looked at. It's roughly about 200 dollars. And that, that's from Marvin down to the ditch, which is the worst of the road from the ditch over to Woodward's, you know, it's pretty good. That include replacing the pipes there at the ditch that are, that are under the road. It include digging the entire road out about four feet, putting what we call geogrid down to kinda span over some of the bad soils and then build the road back up. We did the same thing on 16th Street about 10 years ago. It was in the same condition. This is the fix for it if you wanna do it, but it's about 200,000.
If anybody written a cross up of the road lately, I mean, it's.
It's scary.
It is.
It pulls you towards the water.
It is. I'd, I'd like to request to put that on the list and bid.
Do we wanna do it as a bid or do we just keep doing it as a, as a, as a play?
As, as we're doing these others.
I'd say any of those roads y'all think about is a good idea at this point, but you're just trying to put numbers together right now and make sure you get it approved.
Anybody else?
If, if staff had to pick one of these six today, you're sitting up here, what would staff's recommendation be? What's gonna be the, the most, how can you assure us that that $1.1 million is gonna make it to us? We've gotta pick something today.
I'll assure you, I can assure you that without the approval from the county on that, but right now you do have, one that's the most urgent to spend is the SR money on the board. We had a meeting two weeks ago and indications are they really want us to, that money's sitting out there. If you don't wanna use that money, it needs to go to another municipality or county for utilization.
And I sweat the county on that as well, but our reimbursement will be about right at 200,000. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jim.
Yes, that is correct.
Basically, what we can do is as soon as we expend that 200, we can get asked for the reimbursement. They might want some kind of, some backup documentation, but they'll, they'll reimburse us right away on that, so, so we can repay that.
I just, I feel like this isn't something that we can keep tabling. I think that we need to come to a decision. So do the lawyers.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. If you go all the way down to new business, we have a, we have a point there that says city attorney search and there are three items right now in front of us that we, that we really need some advice on. This is a big one, the road bond. We, you know, we were told that bond council said we had to spend this money by June. We, we can't get the, the bond underwriter to, to give us anything in writing for that. So that's one thing I would like to look at. The other thing on this is the county says we have to spend the money by June. We've got these projects laid out. Do we have a guarantee from the county that they, they're gonna approve these projects going forward? We don't wanna go out and bid and sign a contract and then the county says, that's, that's not, we, we can't approve that. That, that bothers me a little bit. None of you guys were here four, five years ago when we were doing projects and we had difficulty at times getting money from the county to reimburse us for the projects that we're doing. Don't wanna get out of the circle with the county, but I'm looking out for the city and I wanna make sure we're, we're covered. That's, and, and then we got the carry and lease agreement here that I've got some questions about. And then we'll go down to the sewer system workshop thing. We're gonna need some advice on that. So not jumping ahead of the game, but I'm just saying that we, we got some important things here that we, I don't think we need to jump into. I don't think we need to spend a month or two trying to decide, but I agree with you.
Once, once this board decides, we have to basically go and make sure that it's good with the county.
No question, no question.
So we're already too.
Do they won't sign contract? Should we, you know, so is it a catch 22 thing or?
I think we need direction at this point. We need to decide where we're going and then we'll worry about that. Let's pick what we wanna do and then we'll.
I think, um, city manager's already discussed all the details with the county and, I mean, I don't see.
The lift station's out of it.
That's if, that's if. And we don't, we don't know for sure, but I say let's, if, if the board wants to, we can bid it out.
I mean, we, we have to June it, right?
Till June. Contracts on.
I mean, we gotta make a move.
We have to, it's time to do something. Then, then can we go to the city once we make this agreement to move on and go to the county and see if they wanna?
Yeah, we gotta pick, we gotta pick $1.1 million worth of projects out of this, this list right here and see if the county will give their blessing to it, I think, before we go out and bid. Now, I don't know what their stance is. They want us to go out and bid and get a contract first. I don't know. I don't take any of their stuff.
Well, I will say this, guys, you know, the SRF, it isn't free money. That'll equate to with the water lines, a $200,000 loan. I hate to say this about Long Avenue, but it just might not be Long Avenue here. If we can get $1.1 million for paving, I say we just pave, let's pave some roads that we, that we know need it at this point. We can get a list together and look at that. I mean, it's sad, but I don't wanna put pavement over utilities that are gonna need to be tore up.
And we've got, we've got Long Avenue on there because, oh, to 18th, because it's, everything's out on the side in the right of way. Yeah. So, I mean, I don't see any issue with that.
What staff needs tonight, if, to move forward on it, to make sure we get the deadline, is just permission to go out and bid for this stuff. This is not a war to bid. This will be to bid out three things. There are actual quotes on the paving. To my understanding, we can get those with y'all's blessing. We just called and say, hey, look, we wanna get a quote on each number of roads on this thing. The actual ones that we have to bid out is, and there may be, now, if we go back one step further, we had actually bid out the water line materials on Long Avenue back in the, end of the year. We're in contact with them, see if they'll still honor that bid because you'd already bid that out one time before. So if that's the case, you may not even have to rebid out Long Avenue water line. That may already be taken care of. But we do want y'all's blessing to be able to go back to rebid this out and bring it back to you if that's not the case. We also would need to bid out the materials for the water lines downtown. And I would go ahead and bid out the lift station, 'cause you know you're gonna have to do it at the end of the day, whether you do it with this money or some other source. At least you'll have a good idea what you need to do.
The, on the lift station, which I know we, we possibly got the SRF funds that could probably.
True, we don't have approval, which is accurate. We did apply for funding.
So I, I, I mean, it's pushing it down the road a little bit further, but that's an option there. I like, I like all the items on here and I'd like to include that portion of Eighth Street.
That's, that should be easy enough just to get a quote. Send a list over of all the roads, the section that y'all wanna quote on. That way, 'cause we're gonna wind up having to have a workshop, guys, as soon as all these numbers come in. We need to sit down, we'll get it out to you, we need to sit out to the side, which ones we wanna possibly do and then get approved from the county with the recommendations.
I guess, Mike, my other question, how long would it take to get a, I think it's gonna take a little while to get a quote on the lift station.
Yes, well, first off, it's gonna be a challenge for us, Mr. Smallwood and John to put some specs together. So that's gonna take a little bit of time. And then with the project of this magnitude, I think it's gonna fall under the threshold, you gotta bid it out for 30 days. So that's gonna be a 30-day window there to get bids back. So this is a tight, tight window and we may not even be able to meet at the staff level, so you understand that too. We might not even be able to get this stuff back to you in time for that lift station. That's a big one.
I'd say, and I'll put it in form of a motion, let's move forward with these items on the list to include the portion of Eighth Street. If everybody's good with that, I'll make that motion.
All right. Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any comments? Anybody from the public? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass this four zero.
Thank you all. Appreciate all the work. Clay?
Thank you, sir. The next item we have is Jones Home City Sewer, another project we're working on. That is, remember, that's $250,000. We've got legislative appropriation money. Mr. Grantland has ordered up his grinder phones. I think 50 of them we've ordered up so far. That's ordered up. We're at the bid right now for your materials, your bores and your actual materials in the ground. And the conversation of the day too, the county, city joint workshop, looking to see if there's other funding to help some of those people out, maybe even entice more people in, but right now we're having a hard time trying to get people signed up on.
That's correct. We're at 28 signed up officially and there's about 24, 25 that, that are, are hanging out there that haven't committed fully.
Right, and our bids will close, we'll open on the 27th of April, so we'll have that in front of you guys on the fur.
The next item we have is a carry and lease agreement. This is a project, my understanding, we actually went through the PSJRA initially. This is for the lease on the, they actually built some restrooms. We actually, we got some information back. Mr. McHale did work on this for us. The only indication that he told me was that Mr. Carrigan was concerned about was item 15.1. There was some indication that he wanted a little bit of changing to that, but unless you actually gotta do it tonight, it's something you may wanna have your future attorney to look at too. That's another one for legal, 'cause it is a binding contract.
Commissioner Zeta, you said you had some concern with that. We can discuss it, but I don't think we should make any decisions.
Oh, no, I don't. I just table it, we get some legal advice.
All right, let's just table, move on.
All right, on the new business, the first item we have is the ESAD Sewer System Purchase Workshop. Mr. Asper wanted to talk to you tonight about it.
And all, and all I wanted to do was set a date for a workshop so we can speak more in depth about it. And I was wondering if next Tuesday, sixth, or five o'clock would work for everybody?
Good, yeah.
24?
Tuesday.
No, I said noon.
Uh, Tuesday, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday at 1:05.
And the, and the reason being is Northwest Florida Rural Water has come and done a study on it and they just wanna give us a presentation, give us more information.
I know I won't be able to make that. I'm going most of that way. Tuesday.
You wanna be here for this one, it's a workshop.
It don't matter. I, I mean, it's.
All right.
I mean, if y'all wanna do it, I might call in or something.
Jim, just Jeff's speed, just to listen. All right.
I've got, I've got a couple of questions. Of course, I missed one meeting, the first meeting of this month, but a while back we had a, a meeting and, and I think Commissioner Lowery said the county was willing to help with purchasing this sewer system and, and Mr. Seifert was, was in the audience at that time and he didn't even indicate it's for sale. I didn't know it's for sale. He hadn't indicated to anybody it's for sale. So what's the hurry? Four, five years ago, you know, he wanted to sell it and now I guess, do we know he wants to sell it?
I hadn't heard of a price.
So, I mean, it's so premature, I don't, I don't understand. We got a, a letter from a concerned citizen, I think all of you got it, and if you take out some of the verbiage and personal things in here, it's, it's pretty factual, actually. If you look at it and read it, it's, it's factual and it goes back to the time that, that it was brought before us for sale. So I, I just think, you know, we need to slow down, first of all. We need to find out if it, if it is for sale.
Well, and I think, you know, bottom line, I've talked with staff about this. If the numbers don't work, they don't work.
Well, how do we know any numbers when we don't have a price?
We don't know if it'll make us money if it's given to us yet. That's what I'm saying, I have no numbers. They're gonna bring us that, I'm sure.
I think we gotta have a price. We gotta have a willing seller and a willing, willing buyer. And so.
We can take.
Abs, absent of that, we need to find out if this man wants to sell us and how much he wants to sell it for. Then we gotta get it appraised and then we gotta, you know, go through all the steps of the workshop would, would do. And I think it's a great deal at the right price. I think it'll help lower rates for us, but we gotta make sure we get it the right price to start with and then start punching the numbers in.
And I think it's a great deal at the right price with the 250 that the county, they, at the workshop.
Yeah. If we get, if we get a price that, that we think's fair and then use the money that they're willing to give us, then, then it'll be a really good deal. But I, I don't think till, to that point, we, we're, I just think we're premature. And then we go from there, but...
Do you want to do that before workshop?
We got to.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, we're spinning our wheels at a workshop, we don't even know what something, how much something costs.
And I'm not sure, Commissioner, that, that wasn't the point of the workshop, to come up with that price to give us.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm for it, but we need a price. Our staff and the accountants and everybody else can plug it in and see, see if it'll work for us.
And to me, this was an intelligence gathering workshop, so we can get our numbers to give to staff, so they can, they can look at and crunch the numbers and see if it'll work for us.
Give what numbers?
Get numbers from Rural Water District.
Well, we need to get numbers from the, from the man that, that's gonna sell it.
I hope he shows up.
Well, I, I don't think we need a workshop and we get a price.
Okay, I understand.
That's just my, my feeling. I mean, we, we gotta have a price to give before we intelligently discuss it, I think.
It's fine with me, I won't be here on the 24th, so I'd like to be there.
So, can we have staff reach out, and just ask that question?
You gonna ask him if he wants to sell us?
Well, I'm not offering to buy it. I'm asking if it's for sale.
Yeah, I agree. That's, that's, that's what first thing we do, is your property for sale.
So, can we do that?
Yes.
Okay. So, we'll postpone the workshop, until we get some numbers.
I think that'd be great. Thank you.
Good news.
Uh, the last item we have on our new biz tonight is a city attorney search, uh, it's only tonight for you to discuss.
We need one. And so, I know that the last, uh, meeting that we'd asked staff to reach out, uh, to the old RFQs, uh, we had, you know, four qualified people, four or five, and, um, ultimately accepted one. Jim, were you able to reach out and make contact with any of those?
Yes, sir, we have heard back, uh, Ms. Pierce did contact the, uh, previous applicants on there, uh, the previous ones you had, the firm from Sniffin, correct, from the Charlotte, uh, Redding, and from Adam Aubritten, and I believe all three had indicated they would be interested, you know, in serving in some capacity for the city. Um, I've also heard from, got reached, uh, Clayton Studd's deal, he called, I think he's called several of us, and today I received a call from Zach's Whiskey with Coppins Men Road also being considered on there. So, that's the people.
And Miss Stallings also called. It was just... Yes.
Who's, um...
Stallings, Ms. Stallings called, was very interested in it.
So, there's six, and then six files.
I'm, I'm for looking at the, the original applicants that...
The only reason I say that is so we don't have to go through another vetting process, but what I'd like to see is if, if anybody would be able to fill out the time until the next budget season, because we can't, we can't go switching a budget around, uh, to the tune of a hundred thousand dollar tourney, so...
Yeah.
We could get someone to fill that gap until the next fiscal year for that, for that contract.
Your suggestion, we, we hire interim until we get a permanent?
Absolutely.
Is that what you're suggesting?
I think so, and, and if that interim, you know, works out, could turn into something more long-term on a contract, but, um...
I want to, I want to just speak on this a little bit. I mean, and I hate what has happened, has happened with Clint, and I wish him well. Um, and I was, we all had that vote, uh, uh, Mr. Lax, you weren't on the board at the time, but, uh, I was the losing end on the 4-1 vote, and, um, my support was for, uh, Adam Aubritten. Um, I, he's a young guy, he's in the audience, uh, right now, um, I think he's a, a good fit for us, I think he's a good fit for the, the individual commissioners, and speaking to them on issues, um, uh, and I, I don't want to necessarily, I guess, put out there an interim basis, because that, that just don't, that scares somebody off, you know?
Sure.
Um, but, um, as a matter of fact, I'm gonna go ahead and put this in form of a motion. Um, I, I want to hire Adam Aubritten to, to fill out, uh, Mr. McKayhill's contract, the monetary portion, um, and ask the city manager to work with him over the next 60 days to, uh, establish some form of compensation, um, uh, starting October 1. Um, and I would like, Jim, for you to handle that.
So, so your motion is to, to hire him...
Permanently.
Right now, well, permanently, but until October, under the terms of the previous attorney's contract.
Absolutely. And then, and then 60 days, he will, uh, Jim, will work with, uh, Mr. Aubritten to establish a long-term agreement.
And that will be brought back to the board for a vote at that time?
For, for the new...
For the new term.
The new terms?
Correct.
I would, I would, I'd say, I'd say I'd let the city manager handle it.
Yeah, okay. Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Did you get all that?
I think, I think, 60 days from...
To me, I say today, that he comes back with a new contract proposal.
Proposal.
Um, that'll take place the new budget year?
New budget year.
Oh, okay. All right, I see.
But he, he, he works that out, works Mr. McKayhill's previous.
Gotcha, I see.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, any discussion, any further discussion?
Well, I, I agree with, um, Mr. Lowry, I believe that we need to go ahead and bring somebody in, not interim, it, it kind of scares them off. Go ahead and hire somebody, so we can get some of this stuff, um, get some legal advice and get some of this stuff pushed on through, so, um, I agree totally with your opinion.
Appreciate it.
And I'd just like to say, you know, I, I know you were home to losing end of a 4-1 vote, but, um, I gotta tell you, I, I was a supporter, uh, as well, uh, and it really came down to me, the locals' preference, and that meant a lot to a lot of people.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, we gave it a shot, and, uh, I think I, I can support that. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
All right.
All right, motion carries, 4-0.
Can you start him out?
Can you take your seat? All right, we're up to public works.
Commissioner, I don't really have anything, so unless there's questions...
Six things.
Well, we've already discussed those six, yeah. We'll be talking about those again, too, so, but I, I don't have anything unless there's something for the board.
Any questions for John?
That, I, I would like permission to go to a baseball game.
You're gonna have to ask your boss. That's, um, service water plant.
Same here, I don't have anything, you know, unless there's questions.
Still good flow, been testing?
Still good, thanks, yeah. Pretty good.
Got anything for you? Okay. Waste water?
We're at, uh, 3 foot 11 of freeboard, so almost 4 foot of...
Not a freeboard.
So, we've still got a lot of room, we'll do, uh, the algae's starting to show up just a little bit, so kind of expect it. Uh, we're gonna postpone, um, pumping any water out of the drain until we have to, which, I mean, another foot or so, then we're gonna have to start pushing it back down, unless we start seeing a lot of rain coming, that kind of stuff.
Kevin, are we still somewhat on a more doofy spraying, or are we up, we're getting spray?
Well, it's, it's a numbers game, um, for, when you look at our, our permit, we have certain limits, and what we're doing is we're, we've got some pretty high numbers because of the algae, some time back. It's a 12-month annual average, so when, when those high numbers come off, you know, we drop all annual average down into permit limit, and that kind of gives us a little bit of flexibility to stay. So, that's why I've got pushed really hard, uh, during the winter, really hard, so we've got the pond way down, I can get a couple of months off, we don't have to discharge anything, so those numbers come back at zero, brings our annual average down. So, you know, we're, we're in pretty good shape, we still don't have anything new as far as permit, and it may take quite a while to get, um, I don't, I don't know how long they want to watch us before, you know, first of all, we gotta be in all our little parameters. Like, your TSS is something we're fighting, that's, that's where the algae is. Once we get those numbers down, then, then we should be able to maintain, uh, that as long as they see we maintain, then I think, you know, we'll go back to having a full-scale permit, where we're operating under the last, the last permit cycle, until, you know, until they're happy with what we see. Does that make sense?
Okay. We'll trust you.
Okay.
All right. Finance director?
Uh, just to, to remind, to any residents in the Jones Homestead area that are interested in city sewer, we are moving forward that project into contact City Hall, if they have any questions about that, or are interested in signing up. Uh, and with the thought of the, the new attorney fees potentially for October 1, I'd put that out to all of you, too. We're starting to, to gather our thoughts for next year's budget cycle, if something comes to mind, please relay it on to us, so that we can start building budget ideas for, for the next fiscal year.
That was a question I had for you, while we were going, y'all were starting to budget.
We can put together a schedule and shoot that out to you, and try to get a timeframe, so that we can all start putting our heads around next year's fiscal budget. Other than that, I don't have anything particular.
Thank you. Thank you so much. City engineer? Yes, sir. I don't have anything, I'll meet the contractor over at this meeting, so we'll get that wrapped up, and we've already talked about Long Avenue, so, any questions, I think, or anything else?
Appreciate your work. Thank you.
Okay. Code enforcement, everyone's got their emails, I'm sure? Right. Police department?
Hey, sir, I don't have anything on the agenda tonight, unless the board has questions.
Like your, like your light on Monument there at 9th Street, gets your attention.
Or did, we're just trying to slow down, hopefully it's new, new speed limit, so take a little while to get used to.
Yes, sir. Anyone? Mike, chief? City clerk?
Yes, sir, we need to have someone serve on the canvassing board, I believe you served last year, but Mr. Hamlin did call from Supervised Elections and ask that we supply one more, he will be on it, I will be on it, and we need one from the board.
I hope I wasn't on it last year. I was running last year.
Okay.
Uh, Tom, where you been on it this year?
I'll do it again.
All right, thank you. That's all.
All right. Citizens to be heard. Anybody have anything? Come on up.
Okay. Okay. I'm Lisa, I'm still Lisa. It's springtime, and we have a baseball field over at Peters Park, and we need some bleachers out there. We have one set of raggedy bleachers, and four steps high, and it's all broken and torn, so we need to get some bleachers out there, at least two additional sets, because we are having baseball games, uh, they're the little kids, they're enjoying having, you know, running their bases on Sunday afternoon, and Saturday afternoon. Everybody didn't sign up for the baseball out here, so I need for you guys to take a look at that, and see if that can be done.
We do have 5,000 in capital dollars for Washington, uh, and the Stackhouse, in, in this fiscal budget.
Would it need to buy some, or just transfer some?
Well, that would be a question for John, I think he would have a better handle on that. We'll look into that, yeah.
We'll pry some out, and we'll see if we got some that we can spare.
We'll see if the county might work with us, too.
I'm not sure what we got, because right now, most of them are being used, it's leased for the, for the kids that are playing baseball right now, but absolutely, I think it's kind of like tables and chairs, in this next fiscal year, there's something right there, we need to think about bleachers, tables, chairs, those kind of things.
And I think that capital item in the budget was, was originally designed for the summer program, and any needs that the gym might have, but certainly it's available for whatever the board wishes.
Okay.
We'll cross it out, see if we can find someone to...
And, uh, Commissioner Quinn may be able to check, see if they've got some, so you might want to just...
I'll do that. Sounds good.
Come on up.
Um, so, yeah, that would help out quite a bit.
And if we could have you sign in, put your name down for the record.
We're, uh, John and Dawn Lounsbury, uh, we're here to talk on behalf of Clint McKayhill in that unfortunate situation. Uh, we feel somewhat responsible for this, we own the building where Clint lives, and Keith Jones is living, uh, but is not supposed to be, and Dawn wrote a statement to, uh, kind of address arguments.
All right.
Um, John just said we own the building, and, um, couldn't have been nothing but a stellar tenant, and has really taken a lot of ownership, and, since we've owned the building, and we've known him for a few years, and we've owned the building for, for one year. Um, he contacted us last week and told us right away what had happened, uh, was very apologetically, apologetically sincere, he was very embarrassed, um, it was horrible what happened, but we feel responsible, because we led a bad situation with Keith Jones going too long, and we put Clint in a very, very unfortunate situation, and, um, we're not condoning any violence that shouldn't have happened that way, um, but there were significant issues that Clint had to deal with in his living and working environment, that we should have handled earlier, and so, we feel horrible about that, you know, we hadn't planned that at all. Um, we are in the process of convicting, uh, evicting Keith Jones right now, we had a, had a deal this weekend, we're pleased with him, uh, again, and, uh, there's, I know there's other things out there, but, um, we just feel like you should know that there's a lot more to the story, and we feel that Clint's an excellent attorney, a great tenant, and a wonderful member of our community, and we would not hesitate to recommend him at, at any time, so we wanted you guys to...
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up.
I'm Claire Morris, and I live on Morgan Avenue, and, um, I'm talking about the 10th Street Park. I want to thank you who went to the meeting on the 11th, and appreciate you listening to us and hearing us, and responding, but I do have some questions. Uh, in the meeting, they, with the county, they said they were going to step back, and I understand, put it on hold, but I'm not sure quite what step back meant, if it's scrapping that and starting all over, if it's going to be a city venture?
I definitely don't see a response to that. I'm the, I'm the city representative on the ball field committee, and, uh, I met with Clay Smallwood today, and I think the consensus the other night was to take the existing ball fields from 10th Street to 8th Street, uh, pretty much wipe the slate clean there, and, and renovate that area. Uh, parking, uh, would be more off 8th Street, uh, it would allow 10th Street to remain open, 8th Street to remain open, and, uh, I've asked Clay to, to sketch out for the 19th time, I guess, uh, another proposal...
Right.
That, that we can, uh, let everyone look at and, and see where we go from there, but, uh, leave everything from 10th to 16th, just like it is, don't touch that, renovate, we probably have to move to a playground a little bit, there's some things you'd have to move around, but, but, you know, we were hoping to get a full ball field spoke type scenario with the concession stand in the middle, it's not wide enough for that, so it'd probably be three ball fields, pickleball, restrooms, that type thing, maybe move basketball...
Yeah, you know, the pickleball has noise problems, I mean, I'm not, 'cause that would not affect us, 'cause that would be away from our house, but, uh, deal with the people who would be near the pickleball, and it might be, there are a lot of people that I've talked to and worked with, and a lot of good ideas, and that maybe, you know, some of the residents could be involved with, some of the people who are already there who deal with the lights and the traffic that's there now, but also the other residents, and there are a lot of good ideas, we heard a lot of good ideas, there were good ideas in the plant, in some of those plants, like a splash pad, and, you know, there are people who've talked about a dog run or some, you know, there are a lot of ideas that we could get in there and also attract the tourists, I know we're wanting to attract, and one of the main things is to attract visitors to the park, and I think there are a lot of things we could do within gardens, but a lot of the people that were in the group against destroying the park and changing it, um, would really love to work as volunteers, we could get together some kind of Friends of the Park, something that we could help, even if not just for the 10th Street Park, for all of them, if there are bleachers that need fixing, you know, I mean, that could volunteer, there are beach cleanup days, and there are lots of things that are organized in different areas, but that, that we could do something like that for the parks at Fort St. Joe, and yet, a lot of times they're difficult with a lot of knowledge, and some, a lot of us have time on our hands, and to help out, and help one with the planning, so we can get something that works with everybody, get the ballpark people, you know, the people who play ball there, I mean, I'm not a parent at that field, I don't know what the needs are, uh, what the shortcomings are and things they need, but just involving the residents, 'cause I think you'd get a lot of good ideas from us, and see what really appeals to the folks of the community, but we do thank you for listening to us, and, oh, the other thing, was how will we know, I mean, I had both Mayor Patterson and Mr. Quinn, um, apologize for not being more transparent and involving the, the community in the plans, and in what was going on, and it was really difficult to find a copy of the plans, and there was, Mr. Patterson, uh, said he would put a link online, if we could have some kind of information where the residents can find a copy, or get some idea of what's going on, because we were around third concept before we found out, were we able to find it, and we had attended a meeting that we just happened upon to, to even find it, I searched the websites, and there are no reference to the plans, so if y'all could somehow get them on the website, or get them where the residents have access to it.
Jim, is there any way for us to have a section on our homepage that talks about 10th Street Park plan, and we, I don't know, often have to update it, but, um, put all, put the latest version of what we're all discussing on there?
I think you could, when you figure out which plan you wanna put on there, I believe we could put a link on there, we could put something, say, the park proposal, and that way you can have a link to it.
So, like a PDF.
As it's coming up, we're having a planning meeting on the park, or things, if people could give their ideas before it's a, yes, you go back and write for them.
So, so as park committee, if we can list the...
Right.
So, if, so it's not just Clay and I coming up with this plan, I'd rather...
Not that you don't have some ideas, I mean, it's just...
I'd rather, I'd rather he, you know, after he kinda tweaks us a little bit, run it by the, the commission here, and then, uh, we can, I would say, put it on our, uh, our website, and, uh...
That'd be wonderful.
Kinda go, kinda go from there.
Thank you.
I know you, I know you spoke about the pickleball courts and the boys, and I've got, I've got numerous emails from pickleballers in this area, they were even at the meeting, they just didn't, they spoke afterwards, uh, they really want those courts.
And I'm not sure they'll even be light it, see, it's daytime only, and they don't need it.
Well, the thing, I understood is that there's noise from pickleball, there's people, there seems to be the people who play pickleball, and the people who live near the pickleball courts, and, I mean, even investigating, my husband and I always said, "Well, that might be kinda fun to start playing," but I think it's the vicinity, or the closeness to a residence, that really causes a problem, so if there's someplace, another park that's doesn't have that, if there's someplace near a commercial area, I say, get pickleball in, I mean, I think that's a, it's, it seems to be a really robust work, and people are really interested in.
Give them any noise here in the ballgame.
Give them any noise in the little league game.
Oh, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak tonight? All right, I'll start with you, Mr..
I'm just excited about what's going on with MLK, and also, uh, the, uh, I was riding down Williams Avenue, and, uh, Williams Avenue is terrible, man, I mean, uh, we need to try to put more emphasis on, a little bit of emphasis on Williams, we have businesses down there, too, and, um, they may feel that we're leaving them out, folks don't, don't read so much, you know, uh, we need some work done.
I'll have anything, uh, that's a big...
Commissioner, do that.
The only, the only thing I have, we just talked about, is the ball field, so, I'm done.
Very good. All I have is, uh, I know somebody brought up the beautiful speed sign there on, on Monument, uh, did we fully discuss whether or not we could do a time for that, 'cause it, it does seem kinda silly after six, seven o'clock when there's nothing going on, it's really a slow pace getting right up onto the highway.
I don't think we ever did, did we, church?
Would there be anything wrong with doing a same timeframe as the school, 'cause we really did it for the school, not for the church, we did it for the MLC.
I mean, we, we could, I just think it's gonna bring more confusion to that intersection and that, you know, as, as I've said, that statistically is our most dangerous intersection in the city.
Short, short of, um, putting up school flashing signs, like they have at the school, would that, would two of those, when flashing is fifteen or something like that, would that be confusing, or would that...
We would, if we were, if you're gonna do it, that's what you'd have to do, and it, it doesn't meet the state statute, it doesn't school's own, so, I'm sure we'd have to buy those out of pocket.
And I think John said those were about twenty-five hundred dollars.
I just, I feel, I feel about that situation, is that, you know, when you're riding down through there, the parking, where they park, I mean, you really need to slow up, either, I, I mean, during church hours also, you know, but, um, you know, I, I think it's a good thing because, I mean, that, that parking over there, that church, I mean, you really have to slow down to get, get around there, so, that fifteen miles hour need to be there, um, especially on, during, during, during school, and also on Sundays, where they go out to church, or Bible study or whatever, so, maybe it needs to stay like it is.
And I've only had one person mention it, man, so, that doesn't constitute...
We, we timed it, it's literally from where it starts to where it stops, it's only about fifteen seconds slower than what's speed at the one, it's not, it's not the end of the world, in my opinion.
I wasn't here at the meeting, so I wasn't, a hundred people were saying, "Sure, let me go." I've, I've had some negativity, but much more positive.
Yeah. Well, it's a safe, it was a safety issue, I think, that's why we're all on board. Uh, next thing, I just wanted to say thanks for mentioning Williams, you know, I kinda see, you know, and it was kinda heartbreaking at the workshop to hear, you know, that the county may not be interested in participating in an expansion of the CRA, I, I see downtown filling up with retail right now, and I see Williams is the, is a very likely place to start expanding as well, uh, people are doing work on storefronts on there, and it looks, it looks wonderful, uh, the roads fall apart, you're right, and so, as downtown grows, you know, it's gonna keep pushing back, so, I just wanna keep that in mind, uh, for possibility once we finish up with, with Reed, if we ever get the opportunity to, uh, and we start moving down the road and keep it looking nice, and with that, I've got nothing else. I'll entertain a motion.
I would like my adjournance.